Produced by Rooted in Rights, a program of Disability Rights Washington. Seattle City Council District 4 Transportation and Sustainability Candidate Forum, hosted by the Mass Coalition, Transit Riders Union, Tech for Housing, and the Housing Consortium.
Welcome. I'm Vicki, I'm Policy Director with CAC Advice Club. This is the final of five kind of forums that we've been hosting over the last couple of weeks with the Mass Coalition. Just want to recognize those organizations. 350.org, Disability Rights Washington.
The name is 350 Seattle.
350 Seattle? Sorry about that. Seattle Subway, the Evers, Seattle, no, 350, Seattle Transit Riders Union, Housing Club, the Consortium, Sierra Club, Trans... I already said that. Transportation for Choice, this Coalition, Rooted in Rights, and of course, CAC Advice Club. And with that, I want to hand it over to Erica Monet. I want to thank all the members who are here. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you. Oh, this is really loud. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, so we are going to start, and I'll note that Shawn Scott is on his way. We're going to start with everybody identifying yourselves and giving a 10-second intro that explains how you got here tonight. And our timekeeper, Dave, is sitting in front. He will enforce time. And I will jump into questions after that. Everybody will have a minute to answer questions at the beginning. We'll see how that goes. We may shorten it later on. People are going to be going around with cards. If you have questions in the audience, write your questions down. They'll be handed up to me. You can also text your questions to 718-710-1773. And if you need that number again, just wave your hand and let me know. All right, so we're going to start from station left with Kathy Tuttle. What's your name to get here?
Is there a microphone or? I can shout. My name's Kathy Tuttle. I'm running for District 4, and I got here by vehicle.
Hello. My name is Frank Krueger. I'm a renter down in Wallingford by Esports Park. I'm a small business owner of 10 years here in District 4, and I'm here because I want to help people in Seattle, and I'm a fair weather biker after each day in the winter.
Hi, my name is... That is loud. My name is Beth Mountsir. I'm a 33-year resident of Seattle and have lived in the district for 29 years.
10 seconds.
I got here by way of car via Robena to downtown to Renton for a transportation meeting to Redmond at my job as a renter.
Next. So I'm going to say, just because I don't have a mic, I will be enforcing time as will Dave.
Hi, my name is Joshua Newman. I'm running for District 4. I arrived here on 62.
Hi, my name is Ethan Hunter, and I got a ride from my mom today.
My name's Heidi Stuber. I'm an organizational change expert, autism advocate, single mom, and I did drive my Prius here.
My name is Emily Myers. I am a scientist at the University of Washington, and my mom and my aunt and I all took the 75 here. Yes, I made them do that.
Hey, everyone. My name is Sasha Anderson. I am a social worker, a collaborator, and my fiancee and I got here in our Lesburu.
All right, first one minute. And if you can speak, I know this is somewhat contradictory, but if you can speak slowly and clearly instead of a mile a minute so that our transcriber has the opportunity to get down what you say for people who are visually impaired. And also, if you can introduce yourself, just say your name right before you answer every question. And if you don't do that, I will remind you. Many people in our city have barriers to traditional or rural housing such as an eviction record, a criminal record, physical disabilities, substance use disorder, and mental illness and other issues. What strategies would you apply, would you employ, this mic is very weird, to ensure that those people have access to housing that meets their needs? And we will start with Frank Krueger.
Here, I'll take my mic right up.
Hello, Frank Krueger. And as you mentioned, I also bought here, so I'm going to sweat a little bit. I was fortunate to be a portman recently and was talking to them about what issues they face in helping people who had received vouchers, that's one year of rent payment, but they still couldn't find affordable housing. The issues are, you want to stay in your neighborhood, but there might not be an affordable housing there. We need better tools to help people find what apartments are actually qualified for, because a lot of people waste a lot of time looking around and shopping around for these apartments. We can also do better to help them increase their credit score and work on a code signing fund for people who can't get a qualified apartment they want. The city can set up a fund to code sign and help them get into affordable housing even with vouchers. Thank you.
Good. Great headline, though.
Great. I'm Beth, again. Well, the list that you gave, Erica, is a real varied list of the types of people who may have barriers to housing. And I think the way you assess those people in finding housing varies also. People who are purely low-income, that may have jobs and so on, need things such as subsidies, vouchers to get into housing. People with mental health, substance abuse problems, depending on what stage they are in their recovery, they may need more supportive housing, which is what you get through essentially background services and the kind of housing that's delivered by nonprofit builders. And then there's just, you mentioned also people who face evictions and things like that. And in most cases, I think some of the changes that we're making in state and local laws to make sure that people who have evictions or other marks on their record have a fair chance to get into housing than anyone else.
Hi, Joshua Newman. Let's admit that fundamentally, the challenge with housing is a result of the massive wealth inequality that we're seeing in the United States as well as in Washington State, you know, for the last 40 years. The tax structure has squeezed the government because corporations and wealthy have been paying their fair share. And what that has resulted in is that the state governments haven't been able to afford things like public housing or mental health institutions for people who can't take care of themselves. So we can fix the federal tax system here, unless we can address the housing issue with some local solutions. Critical is that we have to build more homes. We need to build them in more shapes and more sizes. We need to increase the number of people who are allowed to live in a housing in the structure, and we need to continue to do things such as fandocks and housing vouchers.
Ethan Hunter. So to start, I support subsidies for low-income families so that they get into housing. I also want to make sure that when people face eviction, that the eviction notice, the eviction is extended so that they can find a place to go longer than what they have now. Looking at things like investing in mental health care for people that need that, making sure that people who are in low income have outreach to getting better jobs, better educational opportunities, and then taking a housing-first approach for people who currently don't have homes, making sure that over a period of years they're able to get into housing and then stay in that housing. So that means that when developers build new buildings, they need to set aside a number of units for affordable housing for those low-income families.
My name's Heidi Stuber, and I think when you're facing this shortage of housing, we are in Seattle, the people with barriers are always going to lose. So I think the first thing we can do is dramatically increase our housing supply. And I think we need to increase density in the urban villages like we're talking about, but I'd also like to just increase low-impact density across the city in single-family zones. And I think more housing will lead to more options for more people and less of this game of musical chairs. For people that have serious barriers, we do need government-supported solutions. We need temporary and transitional housing background services, and we need permanent supportive housing. So we have to identify the funds to increase government-supported housing as well. And I absolutely support changing some of the laws around and giving more tenant rights and protection from evictions and banning the box so that people with different backgrounds don't have more barriers to housing.
Shawn Scott. I think that one of the things that we need to be looking at is we're punishing the Seattle Housing Authority, which currently has a program for rent vouchers that allow people that are sort of on the verge of experiencing displacement as renters to be able to sort of cover the gap from where they are to where they need to be. This is something that I saw very early. Bill the Uplos is a former writer of Real Change News, the single biggest stressor for folks that are experiencing homelessness or on the verge of being displaced. We're actually economic stressors, so the loss of a job, our reduction in hours, an increase in rent. And so those are, that's something that we absolutely have to address first. I also think secondarily, for a long-term solution, we need to get to a point where we're having very difficult conversations about waging, waiting for rest of revenue and/or pay for the construction of new forms of housing. Because without those revenue sources, a lot of this conversation is frankly very academic. So we need to have that fight over rest of revenue sources to get to a renewed take.
Emily Myers. So when we talk about the barriers to housing, what we really need to make sure is that we're addressing like all the different kinds. And so when you're talking, we're talking about evictions and people who have gone through evictions. I think what we need at the city level is more legal support for those folks, because right now there's one lawyer in the city that actually helps those folks out, and they're, you know, it's not guaranteed counsel the way that we do for other legal programs. I think we need to increase, just, we need a massive public investment in public housing. And at Shawn's point, we do need to have a hard conversation about where that money's going to come from to increase both mixed-income housing and improve our renters' rights locally as well as providing permanent supportive housing for folks who need that kind of help too.
Sasha Anderson. I think with such a diverse group of people that were mentioned, for instance, folks who are dealing with evictions, mental health issues, who are experiencing cost burden households, there is no one, there is no one-size-fits-all approach. So you really need to take a look comprehensively at what a person is going through in order to offer subsidies as well as, pardon me, for, and for, in order to have more folks be included and access housing. I'm going to leave this one here. You guys, sorry about that.
Kathy Tuttle. So we clearly need a lot more housing in Seattle. It's something that we're hyper-aware of, and in fact, we've been very aware of for the last 10 years. We haven't done a lot with providing more housing. We need very aggressive inclusionary zoning. We need housing first. Housing first means that people get houses no matter what their condition is. If they're disabled, if they have substance use disorders, if they have mental issues, they need housing. That's the only way we're going to really address the citizens who are the most vulnerable in our community. We need to be building a lot more and changing a lot of zoning laws and a lot of city policies to make that happen.
All right, I'm just going to shout. Can people in the back hear me okay? Great. Crosscut, I'm sorry, it's going to feel like I'm really shouting it, you guys. Crosscut estimated that it'll take well over 300 years at the current rate of funding to build sidewalks where they're missing in Seattle. How will you address this challenge? And what steps will you take to make Seattle streets, sidewalks, and intersections safer and more accessible for everyone, including for people with disabilities? I'm going to start with Beth.
Thanks. Beth, again. Yeah, it's a real challenge in terms of infrastructure throughout the city and especially north of what used to be the city boundaries where we're missing sidewalks and things. I think, you know, part of what we need is to triage. What are the things that help people to get to the places they need to? Sidewalks are really important, especially for kids who are walking to schools. I know one of the ways we prioritize things in the city of Redmond is where are the key sidewalks to move the most children getting safely to school. But it's all sorts of pedestrian improvements and other safety improvements that we need for our streets. So whether that's bike lanes, or it's well-known crosswalks, or the kind of signalization that we need so that people can get across, or the kind of infrastructure where you put a median in so there's a safe harbor getting across a big wide street. So a myriad of investments that we need. I don't have a great idea for the kind of structure funding. This is something I've been advocating for for a long time.
Joshua Newman. I've been thinking about sidewalks for a long time. I was the former president and board member of the Aquele Community Council, which includes neighborhoods north of 92nd Street where the old boundary was, right? So there's a lot of our neighborhood, my former neighborhood where we didn't have sidewalks, but that's also a tree out on the south end in Delve City and south of it as well too. But as an engineer, these are the kind of problems that I address regularly and own, these sort of large systemic problems that also have essentially a technical solution. I've been supportive of, I think we need a bond measure that will borrow the money. Seattle has an excellent bond rating, and we'll be able to borrow the money relatively expensively and get the sidewalks built. We need to be able to do it with lower costs, especially with green stormwater infrastructure and working with the contractors as well as that to improve the process and look at the nitty-gritty details to make it cheaper.
So where I live, Ethan Hunter, so where I live in the U District, there are actually our sidewalks. The problem is in so much of the residential areas, because of construction and building new apartment buildings, sidewalks are being either torn up or just have debris on them. So those need to either be fixed or cleared off so that people with disabilities, specifically in wheelchairs, can get by. And then to Beth's point, looking at especially where students are walking to school, making sure that there's sidewalks there so that they can safely get to and from school on foot. At night, there needs to be street lighting or lighting on the sidewalks so that people can safely get home by foot. And then making sure that we look at places where we can add protective bike lanes for bikers. Biker investing in safety is obviously key going forward, especially with how many people we have in the city. So I'll look at every idea possible to help those people who move to and from work, to and from school safely.
Okay.
Heidi Stuber. When it comes to sidewalks specifically, I think there is a revenue problem, which is what the Crosscut article was talking about. And I'd like to look at developer impact fees as a way to fund sidewalks, which is asking developers to create a revenue stream when they build new buildings that they benefit greatly from and help put it back into the community where those developments take place. And I think that's one place. A great example of this in my neighborhood is South Calvary Cemetery, and it's near University Village. And they used funds from both the Move Seattle levy and from U Village to help create about two and a half blocks of sidewalks. And when I was knocking on doors, almost every other person told me how much that sidewalk meant to them, how it was easier for their kids to get around. People could take, who had disabilities, could get now down to the commercial area and to the University Village. So I think we need to look at creative solutions like that that use the funding that already exists in the city and put some impact on the developments in the area.
Well, for close to two decades, I've been a caretaker. It's my sister Nicole, who kind of served a whole policy, most of the time was a unionized member of SCADU, 775 North Plaids. So this is an issue that hits home for me and for my family. I want to see the city do more to partner with the Seattle Disability Commission to actually heed the recommendations that we already have on the table for what we can do to make our streets, our public spaces, more accessible. I think it's upwards of 30% of the total city service area that's wrapped up in our streets and our sidewalks. So when we're talking about making those more accessible for everybody or for a specific group of folks who have disabilities, we're talking about making the city as a whole much more accessible. And I think if we start from the bottom, start to address the concerns of the most vulnerable, suddenly we're going to find that that will be done, and all of us are going to be able to enjoy our sidewalks, greenways that are all walkable, and that will encourage investment in use.
Just a reminder, please say your name for people who are visually impaired in the audience before you speak.
Emily Myers. So when we talk about accessibility and sidewalks, I think we need to be making sure that accessibility is in the forefront of our minds and not just an afterthought after we've already made the plans. And that's often how it happens now. As someone who worked in a classroom for adults with disabilities and taught transportation through college, I know that that kind of framing is really important to me. And we know that, you know, when you increase curb cuts for people in wheelchairs, then we also see, you know, moms with strollers out walking more. So these types of accessibility issues are important across the board for everybody. We need to be looking at progressive revenue streams in order to generate the money in order to do this. And I think there are like parking lot taxes and things like that that we can be pulling money from that we're not currently utilizing for sidewalks.
Sasha Anderson. First, I'd like to thank you all for bearing with me as I completely choked on that first question. Sometimes, no matter how much you prepare, you still just don't quite get it. So thank you. In regards to sidewalks, I think what we need to do is reexamine money that we already have in the budget. For instance, Heidi brought up the Move Seattle levy that was passed specifically to advance more pedestrian access, bicycles, and transit in the city. Additionally, in 2017, the Transportation Equity Program was created, and that allows up to $2 million a year to be invested specifically in communities that are cost burdened, communities of color, to enable transportation, including sidewalks, to be more easily accessible. We have revenue out there. We do need more in order to get the expensive network built, but we also have revenue currently.
This is going to get old. Going back and forth. Kathy Tuttle. And I am, or was, the founding executive director of Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, and pedestrian action is something that, or pedestrian safety is something that is very much at the forefront of my mind. About 27% of Seattle streets do not have sidewalks, and the reason that we can only afford to put in about 10 blocks of sidewalks in here is that they cost so much. They cost about $300,000 per block face. That means close to half a million or sometimes $1 million per block. I see that there's a role for home zones, that is, streets without sidewalks where we can slow streets down for cars or guests. I see sidewalks as having a lot of embedded carbon and a lot of stormwater impact. I don't think we need sidewalks everywhere. We need them some places certainly for take routes to school, take routes for seniors, but there are a lot of places where sidewalks are not the answer. We need to treat our streets as public spaces that we can all use as people.
I'm Frank Krueger. Every morning in Wallingford, I watch an elderly couple make their way over one particular crosswalk with large curbs. And every morning, I feel terrible about it and want to help them. So I am a proponent to make sure we push along. Kathy mentioned that sidewalks cost $300,000. These grandcross walks cost $20,000, so I understand her slowness. But we do have the money. We're just using it in the wrong places. We have red light cameras, and that fund was supposed to go specifically to helping infrastructure around schools. But that money has made its way into the general fund, and now we're spending it on a variety of tasks. I want to make sure that we use the money that we devote to tasks for those tasks. Lastly, I want to hold developers accountable for their permits that include sidewalks but have yet to build them. On North Lake Way, there is a dry dock with a bunch of boats. It's a very dangerous part of North Lake Way, and it doesn't have any sidewalks because the developer hasn't kept up their commitment. I would push to make sure that happens.
The overwhelming majority of Seattle is zoned, single-family. What, if any, changes would you propose to allow different types of housing in these neighborhoods in the future? We'll start, we're just going to jump one every time. So we'll start with Joshua.
Joshua Newman. When it comes to affordable housing overall, this question is spot on, and it is critical element of how Seattle needs to decide to move forward with both the city council. The question, of course, being, what are we going to do with our single-family home zones? I support allowing up to four units on single-family lots throughout the city. We need to, single-family homes were wonderful in the 20th century. My family and I lived in one, put up on a small lot. We're very fortunate and blessed to be able to do that. But single-family homes are not ever ready for the future. So first, we need to allow up to four homes on each lot. Second, we need to re-legalize housing types, multi-family housing types, such as boarding homes, you know, podmints that were fully outlawed here young, and then address the racist limits.
So zoning issue is one of the biggest issues that I hear when I go door to door. Ethan Hunter. So it's one of the biggest issues I hear when I go door to door. As one of the fastest-growing cities and regions in the country, if we're serious about allowing for people to move here and having, giving them a place to live, we are going to have to allow for more multi-family homes. We're there currently, one home, so as Joshua mentioned, if there's a large home, four homes need to be there. I also want to make sure that when we're going forward, as we upzone that we do so, first near major transportation hubs, that we're incentivizing people, especially people on single occupancy vehicles, to get out of their cars, onto public transportation, onto bikes, or by foot, doing things like that. And then to, when we do that, we can preserve some of the neighborhood, neighborhoods in Seattle where it's still single-family zone. But a lot of these single-family zone neighborhoods are going to have to be upzoned to allow for more multi-family homes as more people move here.
My name's Heidi Stuber, and knowing what a high percentage of our residential zones are given up to single-family zoning, I'm really excited about the ADU and DADU legislation because I think that's a great way to add low-impact density across the city. I do agree that we should have higher upzoning near workforce and transit hubs with great connections to transportation to make more dense and livable urban villages. But I also really like the idea of creating density across the city into these single-family zones. And like we were talking about in the barrier conversation, I'm raising a child that will have a major barrier to getting housed as a disabled person. And I think a lot about his generation and will they be able to afford to live in the city they were born and raised in. And I think the only answer to that is to increase housing supply and spreading it across the city, not just in the urban villages, but coming into the single-family zones with adding, being able to add density on one aspect.
Well, nothing brings people in Seattle to go to public conversations, but I'm supporting someone named Shawn Scott. When I was a student of history at the University of Washington, I looked very, very closely at Seattle's history, long history of white supremacy as it was enacted in our current zoning code. And so if we're serious as a city about needing the cross-sections of racial justice and environmental justice and having a city where people don't have to travel very, very long distances from home to work, we have to get serious about confining our current zoning regime to the conversations that we have about where we're going to put public housing, about how many duplexes that we want, how much multi-family housing we need are going to be material, because our current zoning regime makes that, those kinds of arrangements illegal in 75% of our city. So we're going to have to change that to confront where we've been since our past with respect to racial discrimination and where we want to go with respect to climate justice.
Emily Myers. So I want to be clear that this is, in fact, a climate justice issue. When we talk about housing and building up in our city, we are going to have a massive influx of people into this region because it's going to be one of the few regions that's left in the next 20 to 30 years if we continue on this path towards climate change. So we need to be building housing. We need to be absolutely ending exclusionary housing and exclusionary zoning. And that means building more, the missing middle of housing, triplexes, duplexes, and things like that, while simultaneously making sure that we're building up our infrastructure and transit around our neighborhoods so that people can still get around without having to rely on their cars and without having to let out of parking.
Sasha Anderson. One thing that I'm bringing up with folks when I talk about zoning is in 1957, there was a mandatory downzone in Seattle. And before that, some of our most desirable and livable neighborhoods, Queen Anne and Wallingford, were directly rep- Wallingford, were directly spoken about in the Neighborhoods For All Report, were a beautiful mix of single-family housing, triplexes, duplexes, multiple houses on one lot, and it worked. Those neighborhoods are today what they are because of the zoning that existed before the mandatory downzone in 1957. I think this is so important to bring up because it shows that we already know this type of zoning works. It's not something that's scary. It's something that makes neighborhoods livable, affordable, easy access, provides easy access to transit, and it's something that we should return to. Thank you.
Kathy Tuttel. Last week, I went into Wallingford, saw the Wallingford, and I was knocking on doors and went to a beautiful old house, knocked on their door, and talked to her for a while. She was very positive about everything I was saying, and then she asked about putting a mother-in-law apartment and a backyard cottage on the property and what I thought about it. And I said, "It's a great idea. You know, I can see addus, daddus, duplexes, all sorts of housing for all sorts of people in our neighborhood." She shut the door in my face. So two doors down, there was a triplex. You wouldn't know it from the outside, but there were three unrelated adults living in a house that had three separate doors, same-sized lot. We can have a very aggressive inclusionary zoning. We can have affordable housing zoning overlays. We can have the density that we want, a gentle density in neighborhoods. Thanks.
Frank Krueger. I come from the generation that cannot afford to live in houses, cannot afford to buy houses in Seattle. Currently, you need to pay over $120,000 a year to comfortably afford a house. If you look at the charts, you'll see a nasty downtrend starting around 2008 and carrying on to today, where very few people can afford to buy a new house. That's why I am excited about ADUs and daddus. My friends have all come up through it. I'm especially excited about the current legislation. I've come around a bit on it. At first, I thought that owner occupancy was an important thing, but there was a recent environmental impact survey, Appendix A, I hope you all read it. It gives a very convincing argument why we don't exactly need owner occupancy requirements on top of the idea that it might be unconstitutional. So I'm very excited, actually, for the progress that we're making in this territory. Of course, we can do a lot more to improve. Thank you.
Beth Nouseier. Yeah, complex problem, one that some of us have been working on. And I think the approach of accessory walling and daddus are good, but as other people have pointed out, pre-war, throughout our neighborhoods were triplexes, duplexes, all sorts of ways, some of those hand-pulled little apartment complexes that we all love, those are not, you basically can't build them right now in the single-family. So I think everyone on the panel is in agreement that we need a change. But I would also say, I would approach this from an architect's point of view, and I was trained at UW, have a master's degree and was practicing. And this applies whether it's in the single-family neighborhoods or in all of our urban centers. One of the things that people I think are really reacting to is the transition in our city that's happening very quickly, and it's the quality of the design and the fact that it really needs to be bought out in terms of how you are complementary.
All right. Next question is about Rapid Ride. What will you do to deliver the Rapid Ride expansions promised in Move Seattle? And how will you ensure that bus expansions are high-quality for transit riders?
So as someone who takes the bus, Ethan Hunter, as someone who rides the bus every day, having different bus options to get to and from where you need to go is critical going forward. I'll work with people in the Seattle Department of Transportation to make this happen. I support the Rapid Ride expansion. At the same time, I also want to make sure that buses, not just in District 4 but throughout the city, are moving more frequently. So that means for things like Route 70, that things like Route 70 are coming every seven or eight minutes during high-traffic hours instead of every 15 or 20 where people are waiting these longer times. Public transportation is something that I want to see people getting on going forward, getting single occupancy vehicles off the road, onto buses, as I mentioned earlier, onto bikes as well, or on foot. And so things like Rapid Ride and then expanding the already-existing bus routes is something that I'll work to help.
I think with the Move Seattle Levy, we have such a great opportunity, both, oh, Heidi Stuber, we're reminding each other. We have an opportunity both to expand Rapid Ride and to think about the local neighborhood bus routes, both. And I think both are a part of what's imperative in getting more people using public transportation. And so we need more Rapid Ride that make it easy to get to work, and we also need the local routes that connect people in our district, many to light rail. We don't have enough neighborhood routes out in this part of the city. When I'm out knocking doors, a lot of people tell me that, and that they lost their neighborhood route in the Rapid Ride. And so I think it's about good management of the Move Seattle Levy funding. And I'm a big believer that we need to elect people who are financially literate so that they can do a good job using the resources that we already all agreed to put into this process.
I think with the arrival of Sean Scott, with the arrival of light rail lines dedicated to the city, I think we made a mistake as far as the fact that we reduced a number of bus lines that provided very, very useful, whatever, no negative or any world is redundancies, right? So sorts of bus routes, places where people are going to be walking and busing and also have access to light rail. So we need to reinstate some of those, I think, refunding, making sure that the transportation benefits are distributed to something that we're providing, making sure it's adequately funded, is something that will go along with it as well in the event that we need to have Seattle do something like a dip in 2014 in saying that we need to take the onus from Olympia and on our own, actually build the kind of bus routes that we need. And also making sure that our east-west bus connections are where they need to be because I think that's a missing component of a lot of this conversation in talking about making sure that people have bus routes and sort of last mile solutions to get from transit stations toward the right of the district.
Yeah, I think, Emily Myers, thanks for bringing up the east-west bus routes because I think that's really important. Another thing that we haven't talked about yet in this question is the fact that we're actually really, really short bus drivers and drivers in general, and that's something that I've learned through my conversations with ATU 587, which is the Bus Drivers Union, and some of the other driver unions. But we just don't have the capacity, even if we do expand our bus routes right now, to hire enough people to actually staff those buses, or places to store the buses when they're not actively on the roads. So we actually need to be looking to at public lands, where do we store buses when they're not running? And how do we hire in, how do we hire more folks to drive those buses? Because obviously, they don't move if there's not people there to operate them. Make each of those our good living wage jobs, and people can support themselves on those as well.
Sasha Anderson. So I was looking today at the Climate Action Plan that was released by the city back in 2013, and it's 37 pages long, and it goes into very deep detail on bus routes, bicycles, pedestrian access, and how to get people to and from their work-in-home outside of a single occupancy vehicle. They go into a lot of detail about who the lead department is, what resources they have, and what resources they need. But one big area where they're lacking a lot of detail is in public engagement. This question came up at an Eastlake forum about the Rapid Ride along Eastlake, and there was a lot of opposition to it because people weren't feeling heard or that they knew why it was happening. I think focusing on public engagement in order to gain political will to actually implement more Rapid Rides is a great starting place. Thank you.
Kathy Tuttel. So I totally agree with Sasha that the bus Rapid Ride is a climate issue. First and foremost, I think we need safe, convenient, fast, buses being the best option. That's what we need to do to make sure that people are traveling that way. I actually want to, I have only some time about the idea of automated vehicles because I think that's the way our buses are going to be ending up going. I think that it isn't only a labor question, and I think that we can optimize our bus routes and get everybody into bus, essentially, our impact, the most convenient, safest, best option for getting around the city east, west, or south. And it is going to be something that really dramatically impacts our climate.
Hi, Frank Krueger. I think the worst, but most important lesson we learned from Eastlake is the unfortunate thing that happens when you pick buses versus bikers, when we have to make that decision. I think that in almost all cases when it comes to Move Seattle, the city has spoken, and we want to prefer protected bike lanes over parking spots. We want to have a better Rapid Ride. In terms of emissions, we have very strong goals for the city. By 2015, we want to be carbon neutral. By 2040, we want an electric bus fleet. We are a long ways from getting there. So while we certainly have a lack of bus drivers, we also have a lack of buses, and we need to start purchasing more and converting our current gas buses over to be electric and our current hybrid buses to be purely electric. And I want to see Seattle commit to their environmental goals.
So on a normal day, I'm Beth Nouseier, every day, and on a normal day, I commute from Ravenna over to Redmond by bus. I connect with the local metro, switch to Sound Transit, regional express there. I was down in Redmond today because Metro, it can be transportation planners from around the region to talk about the next phase of Metro and where they go. Metro connects, is a major bus planning to connect urban centers and player centers. But the main topic today was equity and the needs of people who don't necessarily commute. They need buses late at night to get home from their job, or not buses. So the real first mile, last mile, is the kind of changes that we're innovating on. Speaking of buses, so there is already a plan. Metro is a King County function, not Seattle function, but we pay by voting for Sound Move to buy more bus service.
Hi, Joshua Newman. It just so happens that I, we're going to need to make some hard decisions, and we're going to need to remove arterial street parking. We have to start prioritizing other uses and car alternatives. We have to make it easy to get around without a car. I just published yesterday on the Seattle Transit Blog, an op-ed that called for exactly this and suggested some solutions on what to do with that extra space once we get it. Furthermore, in Seattle, I'll run my legislation that makes that a standard and so that it's still allowing the permitting to change the street. And then for, we need to increase, we do need more drivers, and we just need simply to raise their pay and hire more. It's more complicated, but essentially, we pay more and more people will apply. And in my last few moments, I just want to point out the one candidate that didn't have the bravery to show his face here tonight. Alex Pedersen worked through on the D-More Tunnel. He opposed Sound Transit 3, and he opposed Move Seattle. So I want your support. I want you to vote for him. One of us is him.
I'm going to take over the mic for a minute. This feels good. All right. You have arms in front of you that say "I agree," and on the other side, they say "I don't agree." And those are your two options. So these are yes or no questions, and we're going to do a quick lightning round. I will read out what people's responses are, and we're going to do this at lightning speed. Do you support rent control? All right. The notes are, oops, the notes are Beth, Joshua, and Heidi, and everyone else says yes. Question two. Do you support the legislation proposed by Councilwoman Michael Bryan to make it easier to build backyard cottages and mother-in-law carpets? Everybody says yes. Do you support congestion pricing? Frank and Heidi say no, and everyone else says yes. Do you support legalizing electric scooter sharing in Seattle? Everyone says yes. You guys, this is controversial. Do you support shallow red subsidies to enable people at risk of becoming homeless to stay in their homes? Everyone says yes, except for Frank, who says no. And this is a couple from the audience. Do you support transportation network company fees? So fees on Uber and Lyft? And I believe this would be you to pay for transportation and other amenities. Everyone says, hold this up. Everyone says yes, except for Ethan, who says no. Do you support demand-based pricing for parking? So I'm basically paying more when demand is high. Everybody says yes, except for Emily, who says no. All right. And if you have questions for the panel and you haven't gotten them in yet, wave your hand, get a card, write it down, and they'll bring it up to me. Okay, next question, we're going to start, and I will relinquish the microphone in a moment. We are going to start with Heidi. Describe your experience advancing racial equity. How has it informed your approach to land use, transportation, and public outreach?
How much time?
Let's do 45 seconds. In the interest of getting as many audience questions as possible, I want to encourage you to be succinct.
My name's Heidi Stuber, and I started my career teaching environmental science in inner-city Chicago as a part of a program that talked a lot about racial equity and justice. And starting my career as a 21-year-old in a neighborhood that dealt with a lot of generational poverty, immigration issues, and extreme gang violence, actually informed my worldview my entire life. As a white woman, I bring a lot of privilege to the table, and it's really important that I recognize that and think about the ways in which we have systemic systems of racism and classism built into our education, our transportation, and our housing policy. So I absolutely think the City Council has to keep that at the forefront of their mind as they make decisions.
So as the outreach coordinator for the Office of Arts and Sean Scott, I'm Sean Scott. I used to work as the outreach coordinator for the Office of Arts and Cultures, attempting to revamp King Street Station into a cultural hub. And so we use the RSJ toolkit to hold over three dozen focus group sessions, or we talk to 300 Seattleites, stakeholders in the arts economy, about what we could do to make King Street Station a more inclusive space that's representative of everything that the city has to offer. But the fact that I'm the only African-American candidate in this race, I think is a policy failure. It speaks to the amount of displacement that we've seen over generations, and so we need candidates and campaigns that are willing to name Seattle's long and ugly history of white supremacy for what it is, and also advance solutions on what we're going to do to keep that from happening in the future.
Emily Myers. As a union organizer and as a woman in science, I've used my, I've fought for equity inside of science for the last 10 years that I've been a scientist. And so that kind of framework of racial and gender equity is really important to me, and I think it's a lens that we should be applying to any decision that we're making at this city. And to that, I would say that when we're looking at transit specifically, we should be looking at fair enforcement issues so that people are not facing misdemeanors and therefore deportation if they're caught by fair enforcement. And we should be looking at what communities in our city are lacking for transportation, for public transportation. And we're running for four, but we're going to represent the city as well, so making sure that our communities have transportation.
Sasha Anderson. So I learned pretty much everything that I know about racial equity by taking classes and working with Anita Hill when I was doing my double master's degree at Grand Ice University in Sustainable Development and Coexistence in Conflict. And what we focused on time and time again was checking your privilege, was working as hard as you could to make sure every policy you were working to institute was talking with the people who are going to be directly affected and impacted by those policies, to really sit with the groups that you say you're working for to make sure they're telling you what you need and what you should be doing. you what you need and what you should be doing. Thank you.
Kathy Tuttle. I got my first look at equity and the city by working with the Seattle Parks Department. I was project manager and planner for 40 parks and community centers. And the resources that were given to parks and community centers in high-income communities were a lot more than they were in the low-income communities. This continued in my work with Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, where the streets that we actually provide to people are completely inequitable. For example, Rainier is a street that has been trying to get safe bike lanes on it for almost a decade now. And it's something that we need to look at as privileged people to know that.
Hello, Frank Krueger. I quit my job 15 years ago and started my company specifically to help exploited immigrants. I worked in the tech sector, and it was quite common to have people come over, take their visas, take their passports, hold them in a safe without people, and give them small wages. I worked to make sure everyone received a high-wage, inequitable wage throughout my company. And I'm proud to have helped a bunch of people come to America, get their green cards, and become citizens. I continue that work with the Horn of Africa Services down in Rainier Beach. I worked as a study program, an after-school math and science program, STEM, where I had 13-year-olds doing calculus. I believe.
Beth Mancier. So I think we've all acknowledged that probably northeast Seattle, we all have a certain amount of privilege. And I agree with Sean, it's a failure of our society that we don't have more candidates of color for low income. My experience, and I would say, local governments have been late to the table, looking at all policy choices through a lens of equity, not equality, spending the same amount of money. But as Kathy points out, the inequities and the lack of equity in investments throughout the city have really not made it a even playing field for everyone. We'll be elected as District 4 representatives, but I would be working for everyone in the city.
Josh Newman. Yes, it is an example of our privilege that we only pay one person of color in this race, particularly with Jacob. But that small group does reflect that, I feel, which we're all going to acknowledge that. Working too aggressive, we need to continue utilizing and expand the application of Seattle's racist social justice toolkit. The recent report on congestion pricing was an excellent example of this. On the Saturday page, there was an example of how equity is affected by that and how the different solutions might affect it. Personally, I work as an engineer at a company, and I've been in meetings where it's all men in the room, and I've made an explicit example when I'm having meetings, when I'm organizing them. To change it!
So I was fortunate enough to graduate from Garfield High School just a few years ago, which is one of the most racially diverse schools in our state. So I saw firsthand how kids, especially black kids and Hispanic kids, were affected by racist policies enacted years before. There were AP classes in Garfield where it was all white kids. I think we can all agree that not leaving just kids of color out doesn't mean that they're capable of being in an AP class. So that's racism right there in our Seattle public schools that needs to be dealt with. I'm also fortunate enough to work as a line cook in South Lake Union, where many of the people I work with are immigrants who came to this country looking for a better life, for better jobs, protecting them from deportation.
The United Nations Climate Report tells us we have about 11 years to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by more than 50%. Given that more than 50% of Seattle's greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation, what are the highest priority actions to put Seattle on a path of decarbonization?
Well, I think, Sean Scott, what we want to do is, first and foremost, look at the fact that our city, mostly for our schools, 95% of those buses are still actually on fossil fuels, and that's unacceptable and deeply symbolic of the debt that they're leaving future generations as far as exposing them to kicking the can down for not reducing our emissions. I think secondarily, we want to look at divorcing our city's pension fund from fossil fuels. Currently, 10,000 city employees have their retirement funds. I don't know what kind of future we're going to have to look forward to with those retirement funds with the rate that we're going in, but while we're still sussing out how that's going to look, we want to divorce those pension plans from fossil fuels. And third, I think that we need to end the trade.
Emily Myers. So the climate report was actually one of the reasons that catalyzed me into this race as a scientist. Obviously, climate change is extremely important to me. So around transportation, you know, we need to be getting people out of single occupancy vehicles, into public buses, finishing and supporting the bike master plan, as well as looking at proactive drawdown solutions, where we actually are drawing carbon out of the atmosphere and partnering with climate scientists to come up with those solutions as well. And then looking into green leases, because buildings are the second-largest polluter carbon emissions, sorry, the carbon emissions. And right now, there's no incentivization for landlords to clean their buildings up.
And then when I say that, that's it, I mean it.
Sasha Anderson. I'll do my best. I think in order to meet these goals, we need to make it as absolutely easy as possible to take public transportation and to get out of our single occupancy vehicles. I think that can be done through incentives and also through kind of the stick approach, really focusing on implementing congestion pricing immediately in order to gain revenue that can also be used to make public transportation lower cost or free. To get people in light rail, in buses, out of their single occupancy vehicles is an urgent approach that we need to take. I'll also add in.
I was going to talk about trees.
Kathy Tuttle. Three words, I guess. Dense, walkable neighborhoods. That's where we need to go. And we also, to get between those neighborhoods, need to make transit reliable, frequent, cheap. And the other thing I want to bring up to is a climate impact that is tangentially a part of the carbon impact is Puget Sound Energy. Right now, we are relying upon it, and we should be moving over to City Light and other local energy sources. So let's change that. And dense, walkable neighborhoods are where we really need to go. That's going to help us get to that 50% reduction in 10 years.
Frank Krueger. I'm actually very excited because I believe that Seattle is in a unique position to be a model green city throughout the world. We get 90% of our power through renewable hydro power, clean power, another 5% through renewable sources. We are in a unique position to do a great job at all of this. I don't want to let buildings off the hook, this is a question about cars, but 50% is buildings, and they are, they've shown good progress, but they are on a decline, and they need to step up to make their 2050 goals. I'd like to see the state and the city in very self-driving cars. All these planes are electric. We should be pushing for more electric vehicles. I believe that we should also clarify our municipal code to ensure that.
Beth Mancier. While also trying to do bullet points, I agree, we need walkable, dense neighborhoods, where it makes it easy to get around, but not all trips can be done walking or carrying their groceries. As someone mentioned, I think the highest percentage of the greenhouse gases are from single occupancy vehicles. So one of the things is we're switching over to electric vehicles. City's been investing and requiring developers to put in charging stations, and I heard it's still a barrier to why people don't necessarily buy electric cars. We need to work with the state legislature to bring back the tax credits for electric vehicles. The bus fleets are being converted to electric. They're expensive, though, which is why our kids' school buses haven't been converted. And then finally, I do agree on the buildings. One of the advantages of potentially a city renewing itself is going to more clean energy.
Josh Newman. We know what the solutions are. We've all been talking about them. It comes down to having denser neighborhoods and making it easy to get around without cars. Again, we need to remove arterial street parking. But what really is going to make the decision for the next city council is who's going to agree enough to actually have these hard conversations and be able to find ways of working with people who are unsure about that future and who are scared about that future to implement these plans. And I've done that repeatedly with hard conversations. So in addition to getting rid of the, or getting less cars, we need to have, we need to be able to build enough solar or renewable energy in the next ten years to replace all of our fossil fuel needs, including for cars.
So as the youngest candidate in the race, climate change will effectively be the longest, and so hopefully I'll be here the longest, even after. So, lost my train of thought, sorry. So going forward, going forward, I want to see single occupancy vehicles off the road. That's the number one thing that I think we can do here in the city of Seattle to help with climate change going forward. So that means getting people onto buses, onto bikes, or traveling by foot. I also want to see for Seattle Public School students, having the, giving all Seattle Public School students a free Orca card to get around. If we can get these kids either walk into school or on bus, rather than driving to cars, which a lot of high school students do, that's a new.
Heidi Stuber. The privilege of going last is that all the great things have already been said, and I agree with, I think, all of them. Yes to more dense, walkable neighborhoods, yes to increasing access to public transit, yes to incentivizing weatherization, whether you're a homeowner, a small business owner, or landlord. A couple things that haven't been mentioned yet that I think are really great ideas is the local cost for the Lyft pass. I'd like to see those income limits increased to include the middle class, to make it easier for more people to use public transportation. Same with the Home Wise program, which is the weatherization program. When I knock on doors, very few people know about this program, and the income limits are actually more inclusive than the Orca. And that's it.
All right, we're going to do another quick lightning round. And the first question comes from the audience. How would you have voted on the head tax?
Ooh, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Do I agree or disagree with the head tax is the question to ask. All right. So saying no are Beth, Joshua, Ethan, and Heidi, and everyone else says yes. Do you support automated traffic enforcement cameras? Everybody says yes, except for Heidi, Sean, and Sasha. Do you support speed limit reductions? Everyone says yes, except for Ethan. Do you support banning right on Red? Do you support banning right turns on Red? All right. The notes banning them, like New York did. The notes are Beth and Ethan. Do you think that Lyft, Uber, and other rideshare companies should be required to include wheelchair-accessible vehicles in their fleets? Everyone says yes. Is the city doing enough to implement Vision Zero? Everyone apparently knows what Vision Zero is, so that's great. Do you support funding the Center City Connector? Everyone says yes. And did you support the decision not to build a bike lane on 30th Avenue Northeast? Did you support the decision not?
Make the question more clear.
Yeah, do over.
Everybody put your signs down. Do you support the bike lane that didn't get built on 30th? I'm not sure this is more clear. All right, we're going to go to audience questions.
So nobody agreed with the mayor on that. Everybody supported the bike lane on 30th?
Yes.
All right. These are, answer more questions. So this is a question from the audience.
Okay, how much time?
Four head seconds. We're going to raise some of these. Please be specific. How will you fund building more affordable housing and housing for people who are experiencing homelessness?
Emily Myers. Our plan to build a more progressive revenue source comes from tax on businesses that looks at high income, like the top 5%, and compares those to the lowest-income workers in that business of certain size, and taxes based off that inequity. I think that not only is this a more fair tax to be taxing on paid disparities, but also because it's a lot easier to build a movement around something, because, you know, who's going to come out and say, like, I think that, you know, we shouldn't be taxing based on their paid disparities and inequity. So my tax is an inequity tax on big businesses that pay their CEOs millions of dollars.
One thing that I would, oh, sorry, Sasha Anderson. I'd like to look at progressive taxes coming from the real estate excise tax, known as the REIT tax. Portland, Oregon is doing something where they take the 1% of real estate from commercial real estate property, and they direct it to green job training. I think we can direct that to more affordable housing. I also would really like to sit down with Microsoft and have a conversation with them about how we can utilize the $500 million that they pledged to actually start building affordable housing. Thank you.
Kathy Tuttle. I'd love to see community land trust. I'd love to also see housing be able to be built all year round. Right now, we're in a situation where the deeply affordable housing is just permitted and allowed to go up to bid once a year. And actually, while I'm talking about that, too, I think our permitting system is pretty broken at the city level, and it's something that we can't do something about that will allow housing to be built faster and more affordable. So those are all the kind of funky things that I think we can do to make housing more affordable quickly.
Frank Krueger. In the long run, I would like to see the state adopt an income tax. I think it's our fairest chance at having our progressive tax that we can make use of. But in the short term, we have to deal with our current problems currently. And for that, I think that we've asked too much of our property owners already. I don't want to see any more levies against property owners. And honestly, I don't want to see any more bonds. I don't think that putting the city in debt is a smart way to make progress in the future. It's not going to last very long. So what's left? Well, the head tax that we all mentioned already. Unfortunately, I believe the businesses do have to spend more, but I would like to make sure that the business tax itself is a progressive tax, and that small businesses are not unduly burdened with this.
I think it's going to take a mix of different things to produce more, and the question was specifically about subsidized housing, not just affordable housing. Oh, okay, oh. Okay, so I would say, I worked on the best human services levy with now Attorney General Bob Ferguson, and a council member to come up with a plan that would build more housing and deliver human services. The REIT replacement, we already have a tax that produces that, as well as the document recording fee. I do think Microsoft's investment in the $500 million is meant to be a revolving fund. It's a lack, it shouldn't incentivize cities to both, especially suburban cities, to redo their codes, but also to provide money so that nonprofit developers can get their foot in the work, like they might.
Josh Newman. Again, this comes back to the inequality of the last 40 years in the United States and the state of Washington, and we do need to implement some kind of income tax or perhaps a wealth tax in Washington. I would be supportive, and I want to see expanding public-private partnerships because of that inequality in the past, the wealthy corporations haven't paid enough, they're sitting on the capital, now they should share it. I oppose the head tax, but I think we should implement a payroll tax, which is more equitable, and also implement a city bank, because a state bank would be good, but we could do a city bank in Seattle. And let me just say that Emily's idea of a paid disparity tax is freaking awesome.
Ethan Hunter. So I agree with Joshua about having a city bank in Seattle, and I like Emily's idea about the tax. Truth is that companies like Amazon, large corporations like Amazon, have helped to make Seattle less affordable for so many of our citizens. So these large and major corporations are gonna have to start putting more back into the community, and that means going forward, we are gonna have to look at something like a tax on Amazon and Microsoft. I also want to make sure, though, that small, the small and medium-sized businesses aren't being unfairly taxed at the same rate as these large corporations. But if we're gonna be serious about funding some of these projects, these largest corporations who have gotten away with murder for years, paying no money in taxes, need to start paying their fair share.
Heidi Stubber. We're talking a lot about taxes, and I think any solution to our progressive taxation is a state-level issue, and I support our state legislators looking into that. On the city level, because we have limitations on what we can do, I think we have to make really good use of the resources we already have. And as a businesswoman, I'm a big believer in looking at our budget, especially the homelessness budget, which is quite large, and seeing how we can better utilize that to make sure we're creating more temporary and transitional housing with wraparound services. Tiny home villages are a relatively quick, inexpensive, and dignified solution, and I think we need to look at more things that we can build quickly to get more people into shelter that aren't as expensive as we've heard it for housing developments, which also need to be better.
Sean Scott. I'd like to see a retooled, rebranded, if you will, employee head tax. I would like to see the city use a real estate speculation tax. I would like to see congestion pricing. I would like to see the city dip into its bonding capacity, because long-term fiscal solvency or whatever is not really gonna be worth much where we're headed at this rate, and I'd rather have, you know, a planet that we can live on in 40 years, as opposed to a credit rating that we can't use because the world is literally on fire. I also think it's a case that there are a number of candidates in this race who will be vying for a change of Congress support, but also saying that they're going to be interested in pursuing progressive revenue solutions, to which I say, good luck.
All right, next question. What will your approach be to encampments in the district and in the city?
Sasha Anderson. I can't remember the news source, but I saw yesterday that the time that folks in encampments now have to, to collect their possessions and leave is, is virtually zero, that navigation teams are, oh, sorry. Navigation teams are, are showing up immediately, immediately taking apart camps, and it's, it's an inhumane approach. I, I think we need to work more with folks out there in the LEED program to find different ways to, to engage people and connect them with services who are currently living in encampments.
Sorry, I stepped on you there. That was my wrong thing. The C is for cranky background. The only plug I'll make.
I'll make another plug. It's a great plug. Kathy Tull. And yes, we need a lot more places for people, and yes, to the LEED service, which is the law enforcement, social service workers that go alongside a police officer, says camps are being cleared, but clearing is clearly not working because people are moving from Ballard to the U District to downtown in a, in a kind of endless circle, a horrible circle, and these are people that live here. We need to provide life support services for people immediately, toilets, water, shelter. We need, I mean, the ultimate wraparound service is housing, and we need to provide that immediately as well. Right now, we're not doing enough.
Frank Krueger. The most, the most important thing I ever get from anyone is that I have someone living on my porch, and I want to make sure that they're taken care of and receive help. I want to make sure that we move money away from the navigation team and devote it to social services such as hygiene programs and restrooms. We are doing good work with our rest stops where people can come in early in the morning and get themselves cleaned up for work or whatever their day is gonna consume. We need to focus on that and hygiene. But encampments have to be temporary, and I would like to endorse tiny houses and those kinds of self-governed communities. We've seen that.
Beth Nelsier. With regard to encampments, I do think that the policies being enacted right now are fairly inhumane, and yet I understand the frustration of communities who feel like things are just sort of out of control. It's not fair, it's not good that kids show up at school and their needles on playgrounds and all those other sorts of things. But I think what, the triage that needs to happen is there's different populations of people who are living on the street, the people who are mentally ill, who need health services potentially, eventually, substance abuse, same. Other people are simply, they're working, they're living in their vehicles, but they can't afford to get into housing. There's a way to triage to get them housed. They have stable jobs, they just don't have first class.
Joshua Newman. Fundamentally, people are living in tent camps because they have nowhere else to go. Chasing them around to somewhere else they don't have anywhere to go is just throwing good money after bad and impugning, but it's also uncompassionate to just allow our neighbors to continue to live on the freeway, on people's porches, and on the side of the road. So in the near term, triage is the right analogy. In order to address it rapidly and quickly, we need to establish FEMA-style tent camps, like video after natural disasters, and I think we need to establish something in each of the seven districts throughout the city. After that, we can start working on more permanent solutions such as the tiny homes, additional rental support, et cetera.
So my long-term goal obviously would be to get the homeless population in Seattle into housing, but in the short term, we need to look at different options in which they can live safely throughout our communities. I spoke with a gentleman earlier here today who works at an organization called Nicholsville, and what they're doing is providing housing for people around the city for short periods of time, and then helping them transition into other jobs or other forms of housing, so things like that. Over on 45th and 15th in the University District, the church has actually taken their parking lot and allowed for people to live in their tents there, things like that, because then we can have, they can have access to bathrooms, able to clean themselves, they can go out and find a job.
Heidi Stubber. The authorized, the unauthorized tent encampments are not a safe, sustainable, compassionate solution for anybody. And coming in and asking people to move like they did recently on the encampment on I-90, and they just moved across the street, that doesn't work either. We need more shelter. We need lots more shelter. We need shelters to be 24-hour shelters. We need to transition overnight shelters into more of a hospital model where people can come with their partners, come with their pets, come with their belongings, stay in a secure room. We need more tiny home villages, and we need more of the authorized tent encampments, like those are across the city, church parking lots with services and hygiene facilities.
I think this is, Sean Scott, I think this is in many ways a question of cruelty versus compassion. The side of cruelty is very much the side of criminalizing folks who are being poor. The side of cruelty is wasting $10 million a year on ineffective sweeps. The side of cruelty is saying that we shouldn't actually have treatment centers where people are clearly going through OVA withdrawals or other substance abuse issues. I think the side of compassion says that we expand the city's community service officer program to go into some of these encampments to direct people to services. The side of compassion is the side of taxing the rich to actually pay for the housing that everybody says they're enthusiastic about. The side of compassion is the side that says, as the chief of police said, that we can't arrest our way out of the problem of homelessness, so we have to move in the direction of actually being as inclusive of the city as we pretend to be.
Emily Myers. So on our, on our path here to permanent affordable housing and permanent supportive housing, we have to be looking at what is the most humane solution and what is the most cost-effective of solution, and neither of those are sweeps. Sweeps are neither new and humane, nor are they cost-effective. So we should be looking at, say, more stationed encampments that provide services like bathrooms, showers, laundry services for people who are living unsheltered. We have, we need to provide trash services as well, and sharps containers, things like that, to actually help people wherever they're at and meet them there, rather than, you know, trying to hold people up to an expectation that is just unfeasible. And then we need to be increasing our youth as well.
All right, this is gonna be the last question, and then we'll each have one minute for our closing statement. What will you do to improve biking and pedestrian access to the existing future light rail stations in District 4?
So we're opening two new District 4 stations in the Ravenna-Roosevelt area and in the University area, and then people from District 4 will also be lining up to the North Gate Station, so all three of those need to have really good access for people who walk and bike. Right now, it's an uphill battle, and it's a long-term battle that should have been won about 10 years ago. It's insane that we're still talking to the Department of Transportation about it. We need excellent ways for people to walk and bike to these stations, and we need great bus drop-offs. I am so tired of taking the bus to the U University Station now. It's bad access. Just bad.
Frank Krueger. I would like to see more greenways. I've seen the proposals for Brooklyn. We've gone with Brooklyn without it being an active road for quite a while now, and I think we've demonstrated that we don't quite need it in parts, and I would like to see parts of that turned into greenways and better pedestrian safe zones. On top of that, it's, it's a bit tricky because we have these three light rail stations here in District 4, but somehow I live a mile and a half away from every one of them. I don't want to walk a mile and a half, I guess I'm a little bit lazy, so that leaves me with biking, and, but I don't always want to be sweaty, so I actually use a one deal, an electronic device, and I want to make sure that the city is embracing electronic devices such as those EUCs and scooters, and clarify our municipal code and allow that in.
Beth Nelsier. I was gonna go where Frank was going. The innovation since our first mile, last mile, without killing pedestrians at the same time, because I know people are concerned about scooters getting on sidewalks and so on, but it is an uphill, literally, in some cases, to get to those light rail stations, and you want those kind of advantages. I bus in the morning to my stop, I walk home in the local area, and I think all of us will make those choices, but a lot of them are longer commute. They're, they're harder than the walk shot, and so we need to work with the city, we need to work for pedestrians in terms of what they need, but also those bike lanes can potentially have multi-use or scooters, other sorts of things like that.
Joshua Newman. First off, this comes back to density, as we've talked about before, but we do need to continue to expand the number of houses, housing units that we can build near light rail stations. This offer is not just for new residents, but also for current residents when they're compensating for that. As I said before, we'll take again, we need to remove the on-street arterial street parking. That space needs to be dedicated to pedestrians and to car alternates such as bikes and scooters. Scooters can, need to be allowed to share and tap to 12 miles an hour. And finally, on 43rd Street between the future U of station as well as U of itself, turn that into a pedestrian plaza.
So if we're serious about solving climate change and reaching our goals that we talked about earlier, we need to get single occupancy vehicles off the road, so allowing for more houses, more multifamily homes to be built near major transportation hubs like the ones that are being constructed right now, and also understanding that bikes and the walking bike, walking to work or wherever you need to go is part of the solution. So if we're doing things to, like the mayor's decision on 35th to eliminate a protected bike lane, that's not helping us where we want to get to, which is helping solve the climate crisis. So bikes, on foot, electric scooters, as was mentioned, just getting single occupancy vehicles off the road, and if we're not having, if we're eliminating things like protected bike lanes on 35th, they're not gonna do that.
Heidi Stubber. We need to make it easy and safe to access all the light rail stations. Like we said, we're gonna have three in District 4, we're gonna be good users of the ones at North Gate, and I've taken my bike and gotten on the light rail and taken it downtown, and it's really hard to get your bike off and exit on downtown, so we need to think about getting bikes on and off as well. The elevators are often full. I've had to carry my bike up a stairway when an elevator was out of service, so that's something we can do. I also think we need to look at dense pedestrian areas near the light rail stations and do like they do on some downtown crosswalks where they close, they open all the crosswalks at the same time, I don't know what that's called, so everyone can cross really easily. And I also think, that's it.
Well, the, the good news is that we had two 2017 mayoral candidates in the general election who promised to take action on implementing our city's bike master plan. The bad news, of course, is that one of them was elected and showed no leadership on that issue. The other curry moon, the other curry moon has actually endorsed me in this race, and so following the leadership that she showed on the campaign trail to actually have the city meet its climate goals, that's something that I would like to do as far as implementing it seen through the bike master plan. Secondly, I think following something that Metro was able to implement, I would like to see an electric vehicle shuttle that can actually take people from light rail stations to, you know, sort of blocks within the district. It's something that is a Jamaican-American, some Jamaican-American immigrant, it's my grand uncle's story, a similar kind of service.
Emily Myers. So the first thing that I would like to do is start gathering the line bike data so that we can actually see where people are biking who are using line bikes, and combine that with the bike data that we already currently have. And that can help us designate where we should have protected bike lanes, because protected bike lanes are safer for both bikers and for people in cars. So protected bike lanes and building, building momentum to actually get those implemented and built. Making sure that we have designated bike and scooter places at the light rail stops so that, you know, scooters and bikes are not left all over sidewalks to keep them clear. And basically, we need to stop centering cars in our decision-making process about how we improve transportation in the city.
Sasha Anderson. I'd like to go back to the climate action, excuse me, plan that I mentioned earlier. Again, that's 37 pages that dives into deep detail about everything all of the candidates are talking about, all of us are talking about, expanding greenways, making scooters more easily accessible, focusing on transit, pedestrian walkways, bicycles. We need to follow through on a plan that was worked on extremely hard to make sure we're meeting our goals. It's out there, we need to build the political will to, to hold our elected officials accountable to follow through. Thank you.
All right, now we will have one minute for our closing statements, and if you can do it in less than that, you get extra points.
Frank Krueger. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It was a real privilege to get to speak to you. This is the first time I've had a forum with a bike crowd. Super tricky. I hope you got the impression that I'm an optimist, because I am. I actually look forward to large problems. I have worked in my business around the world. I have dealt with governments, not just the United States, but India, Bangladesh, Egypt. I have dealt with bureaucracy and dealt with interagency problems. I love working through those problems and coming to good solutions, and I hope to do that for you. In addition to that, I just want to announce that if you're in a long-term neighborhood or having a waterway cleanup this Saturday at 10:00 AM, if you want a good excuse to get out of the house and go hang out around Lake Union, please come join us at the entrance to Gasworth Park and help us clean up the north lake. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Frank Krueger, and go to vote Frank at all.
Beth Nelsier, I'll stand up this time so I can see everybody in the back, too. I'm new to the campaign, so if many of you don't know me, I filed very late at the last minute. I want to say I jumped into the stories because I think this district could help lead the city in terms of the sort of leadership that we need on all the kinds of issues that we've been talking about. I, I kind of dropped hints, but for those of you who don't know me, I have worked for over 20 years, worked for the King County Council and for the executive. As I mentioned, I worked for the city of Redmond. I dealt with legislation, what it takes in the way of partnerships in terms of working back and forth between elected officials, and I know the ins and outs of a lot of the things that we've talked about. things that we've talked about this evening. That doesn't make me necessarily more qualified, it means that I have some relevant experience, though, in terms of how the city works, how politics works, how to get things done. So thanks, and it was really great to see a bike crowd out tonight. Thanks.
Extra points for Megan Anderson.
Joshua Newman. I've been a lifeguard, a preschool teacher, and a pizza worker. I'm an engineer, I've got a family of four kids. I'm deeply, deeply concerned about the future of their ability to, to live in Seattle and raise families here with themselves in the future. And the question, you know, our grandparents and parents knew that, they were confident that our futures would be better than theirs, and I don't think that most of us can say confidently that we feel the same way about our children and our grandchildren. We need to work, we need to change the city in three fundamental ways. We need to make it easy to get around without a car. Cars aren't our future, we know that, we've established that here. We need to build more homes of more shapes and more sizes, so people can find housing that fits their needs. And we need to build enough renewable energy in the next 10 years to completely replace our fossil fuel needs. We need to be brave, and we need to evolve. Thank you.
Ethan Hunter. So thanks for everyone who came out tonight, and thanks for all of my opponents for coming out as well, except for Alex Peterson. As the youngest, as the youngest person in this race, I'll be dealing with things like climate change, affordability, for decades and decades to come. So if we don't solve the crisis of climate change right away, as Bill Nye said just a few weeks ago in the news, as our planet is, is on effing fire, it'll continue to be on fire, and sooner or later, it's just going to burn up, and we need to solve that now. If Seattle continues to be unaffordable the way it is, I won't be able to live in this city that I love so much for a lifetime. I'll be forced out because of how expensive it is to live in this city. And then adding to that, as a recent graduate of Seattle Public Schools, doing everything in my power I can as an elected official to support our students, support our teachers, make sure they have the funding that they need so that every child in the city can get the education they deserve.
My name is Heidi Stuber. Thanks to all for coming out. I think this group of candidates in District Four is exciting, because I actually believe we agree on more than we disagree on. I think we agree on increasing density, I think we agree on increasing access to public, access to public transportation, I think we agree on taking action on climate change, and I think we agree on supportive housing for the homeless. And so I think that's really exciting. And so I think our district has to decide about what kind of leader they want to elect. So I'm a businesswoman, and I specialize in organizational change, and I really believe the business should work well, business should work efficiently, and business should work for everybody. I'm also an autism advocate and a mom, and my position as a mom influenced me a lot in joining this race. Rob Johnson was the only parent of school-aged children, and when he retired, I thought the only parent needs to be replaced with a parent, and better yet, a mom, because moms get stuff done. And I think a lot about what kind of leader we need to take action on the big issues facing our city right now, and how do... That's it.
Sean Scott. I'm running in this race ultimately, I think, because I have a very deep and abiding faith in the people of Seattle to do the right thing before it comes time to have to do it. As somebody who was a historian, I take a lot of inspiration from the Forward for Respond initiatives of 30 or 40 years ago, where Seattle got together and said, we're going to tax ourselves and raise revenue to try to build a subway system, to try to revamp our car infrastructure. Many of those things passed, a lot of whom did not, the candlestick down the road, and so I think it's up to our generation and this next generation of leaders to actually see that, that vision for climate justice through. And so I was happy to see Seattle recently highlight our campaign, Seattle meeting a new deal as one of the more comprehensive plans that have been put forward, to not only talk about what we're going to actually construct as far as our bike master plan, as far as our streetcar connector, but also who, which of these candidates seems most likely to actually have the difficult conversations about how we're going to get that progressive revenue from the business community and from people who are very well-off in the city.
Emily Myers. I just want to take a quick second to clarify my answer about the parking, parking fees. The reason that I wouldn't support that is mainly because I don't trust private for, private-for-profit parking, people running the parking lots, to not, not disproportionately impact, except people with accessibility issues and people with disabilities who have to drive, and I don't trust that they would do that in an equitable way. So that being said, I'm running because I think we need scientific leadership at the City of Seattle, and we've seen a huge increase of scientists running for office, and I'm really inspired by that. We need scientific collaborative leadership in order to tackle the biggest problems in our city. And that means that we also need someone who's going to build and organize folks, because we know how hard it can be to pass, pass progressive policy. So it's important to have someone that's an organizer. I'm a labor organizer, I'm endorsed by MLK Labor, because I know how to get people on board to get progressive policy passed. Thanks.
Sasha Anderson. So last week, I was talking with a group of my high school students who participate in the mentoring program that I run through, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and we were talking about civic engagement and public service, and they asked me, why are leaders in Seattle haven't addressed affordable housing? Why do they have to move every year because their rent increases? And why can't they, why can't they do after-school activities and participate in sports? Because they have to go home and help out with their younger brother and younger sister because their parents can't afford childcare? And they asked me if smoky summers are going to be their normal for the rest of their lives, because that's what they're afraid of. And that's why I'm running. I'm running for my students, for our kids, for all of us in District Four and in Seattle. My work is in negotiation, mediation, consensus, really. My name is Sasha Anderson. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Tuttle, and I was, I'm running because I was called to do this. I, I have been working in community organizing and climate action for the last 25 years, and I know that we have to lower our carbon footprint by 50% in the next 10 years, and I am the person who has the skills and the connections and the ability to get that done. I have been building projects for people in Seattle for the last 20 years. I've built 40 parks and community centers. I've built a very successful grassroots organization, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways. I am endorsed by people who understand what my work is, Richard Conlin, Alan Durning, Ed Glazowski, Tom Rasmussen, Heather Trim, and the 43rd District Democrats. I know that I can get this work done, and I know we have to get this work done. I'm asking for your vouchers, for you to volunteer, go back to the Kathy sign back there, and for your vote. I have a great new deal for Seattle. I really want to get it done here.
Thank you, and to all of our candidates, let us get a big round of applause.